Ryan is also a councilman and is running for Congress in California.
Wow.
There, I hope that moved into North Carolina.
I think it's like already bought a house.
That'd be tired of California.
So I was gonna use the bullhorn, but I kinda feel more comfortable talking like this. Everybody can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. I would love to move here, right? But let's be honest, I mean, you know, when I look at how much a house costs out here compared to California, it's like a no-brainer. As a matter of fact, I just got a, our year-over-year, uh, how much our houses have moved up in my district. So the average household cost, the average house is $429,000 in my city. So when I look at homes for like, you know, 200,000, 150,000, I'm like, I definitely wanna move back here, but I'm on a purpose. I am a pastor. I'm a senior pastor for church called Divine Appointment Worship Center. I drove out here.
Whoa.
I drove out here from California. I drove 2,600 miles. And I wanna tell you something. It's not by accident that I'm here. It's not. God ordained every moment. If it wouldn't have been for me sitting next to Aaron at the Republican Convention. And so it seemed like everybody that I sat next to at that event had a lot to do with what God is doing in my life. I have a very bold testimony. I literally came out here, me, my wife, and my white-hand man right here, Pastor Blake. We, uh, we came out here really for one agenda. You guys heard the story. So I'ma hit on two topics real quick that's really gonna help you guys out. So one topic is reparations, and the other topic is critical race theory. So those are two hot topics. And I actually have an anecdote for both. Because my family is, we own land that was given to us through reparations. That's been sitting in our family. So that was the, that was the initial reason for me to come out here. I went to Henderson, North Carolina to go visit land. My father actually passed away last year, and he's actually buried. We, we put his ashes underneath a magnolia tree because we wanted to talk about the importance of reparations. Because a lot of people don't know that the government did give a lot of slaves reparations. My family, you know, was dispirited. We actually owned that land, that property. So that was the reason why we came out here. That was the only reason I came out here. But God ended up orchestrating for me to come out here during the Republican Convention. So in the process, in the last 10 days, up until yesterday, I've met with almost every Republican legislator. I sat and had lunch with Lieutenant Governor Mark Robinson. Awesome man. I went to the dinner, the dinner where, uh, former President Donald Trump spoke. Uh, I sat next to Chief Justice Paul Newby.
Open the schools! Open the schools!
Let us in! Students can be in the classroom, parents can be in the meeting!
Y'all make sure y'all keep that slave enthusiasm when it comes time for voting, though. If it's like California, you actually can vote for your school board. Everybody know that?
No.
You didn't know that?
No.
No, you can.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
I was like, whoa, that's serious.
Yeah. Nothing threatens a politician more than losing their seat. That, that, that's the motivation right there, is losing their seat. The moment a politician, that's why a lot of politicians in Congress are against terms limits. They like that power. They want that power. They desire that power. And they forget that the power comes from the people that belongs to the people. So let me touch you guys about critical race theory. Cause one, I, I really wanna encourage people to really start learning about critical race theory. Because I know a lot of us get talking points that is Marxist, and it is. It takes backs to critical theory, which later became critical legal studies, which has moved in from a feminist movement in the 70s. So you're absolutely right. But in order to combat it, you gotta break down what's destructive about it. And here's something that few people, as a matter of fact, I could probably tell you that nobody's really ever made the correlation to, but I'ma give you a really good ammunition that's gonna help you out. It's gonna really bless you, it's really gonna encourage you. It's the reason why they're pushing critical race theory to this year, in the last 10 years. If you go back and study history, 300 years ago, there was another theory that was being taught. And it was called "How to Break a Slave." And it was a letter by William Lynch. And when William Lynch addressed the government, he literally said that if we implement this theory, if we implement this strategy, we can control the slaves for the next 300 years. You guys notice how critical race theory has become real popular in the last 10 years? It started really on the anniversary of the 300-year renewal date of Willie Lynch letters. Now, of course, you can't call it the Willie Lynch letters today because you can go Google that. You can go study that, like, man, why would you wanna teach a strategy to control someone innocent? So they just gave it a new name. And if you go and study Willie Lynch letters, you're gonna find intersectionality, which is one of the tenets behind critical race theory. See, it's easy to teach somebody to be oppressed and to stay oppressed. It's easy to give them the excuse of being oppressed. And that's exactly what individuals wanna do. I was on the General Assembly floor yesterday talking to all of the Republican House of Representatives. And I said, one of the things, and, you know, regardless of your party and anything like that, I, I am a Republican. Uh, I choose to be a Republican because I decided to be a party that freed the slaves, and I like the mindset of the Republican Party. Plus, I'm a Christian. Let's just start right there. I'm a believer in Jesus Christ, so... That's probably the only reason why I'm a Republican. Jesus is not said, everything else is irrelevant. But I remember telling the House, and this is something I wanna encourage you guys to do, because the Republican Party has a unique history when it comes to African-Americans. All of the greatest legislation that was ever passed, from the stoppage of the Nebraska-Kansas Act of 1854, would birth our party. That's what founded the Republican Party, was stopping the Nebraska-Kansas Act, which it was trying to expand slavery. A group of abolitionists came together. So basically, what you guys are saying is you are abolitionists in 2021. That you want to abolish critical race theory. You wanna abolish slavery. And this is where we are today, and it's the reason why they assassinated President Trump's election. Right? Give it a different word, instead of saying they stole it, right? To say they assassinated. It sounds a lot better because they assassinated Abraham Lincoln. Why? Because he was on the pathway to really help build the African-American heritage. And there was so many things that he was trying to do. And then there was a Frederick Douglass during that time period that was really instrumental. And the reason why I told the House of Representatives yesterday, it's time for the Republican Party to start teaching African-American history. Because the Democratic Party has been teaching it for far too long, and they want to teach African-Americans to be victims. Yeah. They're teaching them how to be victims. And there's more to being an overcomer than being a victim. And it bothers me that a lot of African-American preachers are subscribing to critical race theory because the Bible says that we're overcomers, not victims. How can you preach critical race theory and still preach the Bible? And so I wanna encourage each and every individual here, right? Because I don't live out here.
Not yet.
Just to let, just to let you guys know, y'all convinced the city girl to move to the country, so y'all did a really, really good job. We bought one gift away from here, and it was a cast iron skillet. So we're taking the South with us, and some seeds. But, but it's gonna take more, right? It's gonna take more than, because this is a beautiful audience. But I'ma challenge each and every individual here. Because the African-American community is really tired of democratic policies. They really are. The problem is, is that we just haven't offered a real strong solution to where the Democratic Party is constantly paying them every year. And they don't see how this is mental slavery. That's why I said we need another Abraham Lincoln to raise up, because we're dealing with another form of slavery. That's what we are in 2021. Everything, isn't that what Solomon said? How many guys read your Bible? Like, we in the South, I forgot. I forgot, we in the South. South.
You said your name was James.
So... So... What, what it's gonna take, right? Because for some reason, the Democratic Party, what they do well is convince individuals that they're helping. And the problem is, the Republican Party literally has a solution. We have the solutions right here. We just need to develop the push. We need to develop the push. Each and every individual here, you wouldn't be here if you didn't love this country, if you didn't care about your children. Me and my wife, we have children in elementary school. We know what indoctrination looked like. You guys is fighting for them not to bring critical race theory. They've already started bringing it in our school district. Our third-grade daughter has been, they told her to read a book to tell her to join Black Lives Matters. Told her it's okay to get in trouble, because it's good kinda trouble. A good kinda trouble. But it's time for us to really stay hold true to the real value of really what founded this country. Those principles, what really what made this country great. It's gonna take your effort each and every day. For us to drive 2,600 miles, as a matter of fact, by the time we get through this trip, looking at my stuff, the mileage, it'll be about 9,000 miles in two weeks. 9,000 miles in two weeks. That's how serious this is. I don't have time to sleep. I don't have to. The longer we sleep, the more they're up strategizing. One of the things I learned about the 9/11 report when the Twin Towers was hit, I read something really... So, so this is, this is what we need to do from this group. This group needs to grow.
Amen.
This group needs to grow. When Erin sent me a message, right? Think about this. She sent me a message from, I just met her with four days ago. This is supposed to be my resting time before we got on the road to leave. Like, cuz I gotta leave from here and then drive to Goldsboro and go speak in Goldsboro, and then get on the road and drive to Calif, well, actually, we're going to Selma. We're going to Selma, then we're going to California, well, we're going to San Antonio to drop him off in San Antonio, so he can get, so he can get his car in San Antonio, and then he's gonna meet me in California.
Open the schools!
Yeah, go around us, go around us.
Yeah, chick is going the back door, going the back door! Yeah, why don't you talk to us? Why don't you, why don't you talk to us? Why don't you come talk to us?
Come on!
Let us in!
Yes, keep them safe.
What's happening right now is powerful. Because you're having your board walk right past parents and smiling. So, so think about the power of what is twisting show right now. You have your Board of Education walking past parents, not wanting to take the time to hear parents' concerns about your children. And this is the reason why I said you gotta grow this crowd. This is kinda like the, y'all remember Horton Hears the Who?
Yeah.
That's how we gotta start. And we gotta get more people to say, "We are here." We gotta get more people to push our voices up. So you gotta go door-to-door and knock on your neigh, knock on your neighbor's door. And the reason why I said, this is so important, the reason why I said about me coming here, is because I should be resting, but I don't have time to rest. Me coming here to encourage you to knowing that there's a, there's somebody, no, I'm in California. At least y'all got a chance. But I drove out here from California, and I should be resting, but this just goes to show you how important that fight is. I wanna share with you guys, before I end up, I wanna share with you guys a powerful story about the, uh, the defense of Fort McHenry. How many of you guys know that song? The Defense of Fort McHenry. All right? So when I tell you this song, when I tell you the meaning behind it, I guarantee you the next time you hear it, it's gonna mean that much more power to you. So the next time you get together in your group, it's gonna be that much more powerful. Because the more you come together collectively and educate individuals on the purpose of it, on the rights of it... See, they, they don't wanna, they don't wanna have somebody like me here. You know why they don't wanna have nobody like me here? Because I go against their theory. I go against their theory. I'm an elected official who spent 10 years in prison. They don't wanna see somebody like me here. Because critical race theory will say, because I grew up in the ghetto and I grew up in the hood, but here I am, sitting at a dinner with President Donald Trump, meeting on the, uh, the floor with you guys' top legislators, running for Congress to make a difference, so I can combat this theory. They need a testimony like this. They need a story like this. But they are afraid of a story like this. They're afraid to hear that somebody's willing to put all of it on the line, to be talked about, to be ran his name down the mud. Me and my wife known each other since we were eight years old. While I was eight, she was, she was a little bit older than me. There was a group of people in the House. And it was 1812, and the British troops were coming into the harbors of Baltimore. And they were firing cannons from the sea. And so the people in the House were hiding, hearing the cannons exploding all night. We're at Fort McHenry. The young man knew that, that the British was gonna take America, and they were gonna seize America. And they knew that when they woke up in the morning, that, that the British flag was gonna be waving over the American land. But this young man, when the, when the daybreak came, he looked out the window after all night, hearing explosions after explosions after explosions. And when he looked out the window, a joy came over his heart. And so he grabbed a piece of paper and he began to write a song, which was called "The Defense of Fort McHenry." And in the song, he says that the bomb was bursting in air. And he looked outside and he saw that our flag was still standing there. It was originally called "The Defense of Fort McHenry," and they printed it in the newspaper. People started to sing the song, sing the song, and eventually it became the Star Spangled Banner. It eventually became the national anthem. Imagine all night thinking like, man, we, we're about to wake up to Britain all over again, and to look outside and see our flag still standing there. Each and every one of you is that flag that's waving. So when you out marching and when you out speaking against critical race theory, and not just critical race theory, because I'ma tell you right now, that is just the beginning. That is just the beginning. There's a strategy to this. And I wanna bring this to a real full understanding. For the last couple of years, you've been hearing about cancel culture. You've been hearing about Mr. Peanut, Mr. Potato Head, Auntie Mama. You've been hearing about Dr. Seuss. I got my Dr. Seuss socks on. But the reality is, they really just wanna cancel Jesus. That's, that's really what it comes down to. When Karl Marx introduced critical theory, there was a revolution that happened. It's called the workers' revolution. And a couple of years later, it never happened. The workers' revolution never materialized. And there were two historians came to a conclusion. And he said, "The reason why the revolution never happened that Karl Marx had predicted was because the church was too powerful." So the historian said, "What you have to do in order to have a successful revolution of the critical theory, you have to shut down the church." I want you guys to hear that one more time.
Open our schools! Open the board!
Let us in, Kim!
I hear part of your problem, there goes one of your problems.
Let us in, Kim!
Open the board, lady, open the board meeting! You work for us!
Board!
We will take you down!
Lies!
You are not free to lie!
You're elected to be on the board!
Let us in, Ernie!
Sorry.
I can tell. So anybody notice what happened last year in 2020 with the churches?
Shut down.
You notice how during the churches, they started to slowly sneak critical race theory in?
Yep.
Why everybody would focus on the pandemic?
Yep.
Why the churches were shut down? And then all of a sudden, people started to hear about critical race theory. Because this is a playbook out of Karl Marx's theory. This is how you bring communism into this country. These are their steps. And if the church don't wake up, the patriots don't wake up, this is where the Second Amendment comes in to help. If we don't wake up, we'll find ourselves in the worst shape than we are in right now. Because we are in a worse shape. You gonna be honest with me?
Yes.
Churches gotta move away from the government.
Amen.
Churches, pastors need to get rid of their 501(c)(3). They gotta, they gotta get, they gotta get away from it. Because the very thing of separation of churches, say, by churches subscribing to the 501(c)(3) means that you now are under the control of the church. Which is exactly what Thomas Jefferson didn't want to happen. And so, so... The same way we are with our politicians, the same way we should be with our church. The same way. There are pastors out there that are in the trenches. I know some good pastors that have been arrested. Churches have been fined millions of dollars. I know some of them personally. John McArthur in California, absolutely. Well, you know what? Cuz there's money in it. There, there's a lot, there's a lot of...
Nobody don't pay you plaids.
There's a, there's a lot of money, wait, here's the thing, here's the thing. What the government stepped up and said is, hey, if, if the, if your parishioners is not gonna give you tithes, we'll give you taxes. And these are the strategies that's happening, and a lot of churches are conforming to the world.
Just like the schools did.
Just like the schools did.
It's all about the money.
And this is nothing new. The Bible has already told us these things. What I'm looking at right here is the small remnant. You guys are, you guys are more impactful than you think. You guys are more powerful than you think. God loves to do a lot with a small amount. I wouldn't be surprised, and, and I was telling Representative Dixon last night, I really believe North Carolina is gonna be the catalyst to change America. Yes, you guys, you guys, you, you guys know a lot about Civil War. When I drove up here, I saw a street called battleground. That's the first time I've ever seen a street called battleground in any state I've driven through. So you guys are literally standing on a battleground.
Take that mask off, let's see that beautiful face.
What are we waiting on? What does she need it for? I mean, there's not one good reason she should still have power.
It's unbelievable. Except that she's got the votes to keep it.
And they were open.
Yep.
And they, and they don't have masks.
Yay, thank you!
It's just curious, because if you have another county Board of Education that's open, no masks, I, I just spoke, I just spoke there three days ago. And so I'm trying to figure out what's, what's the difference. Have you brought that up?
Well, like I said, I just got it on the agenda.
Okay, good, yeah.
And, you know, as I was coming out, there was something that said, you know, we just went to graduations. We had, you know, they made the kids wear masks.
We didn't wear them behind the stage.
Well, we, I didn't wear it behind the stage twice. And then I was told we didn't have to wear it behind the stage. So one, one graduation, I didn't wear it because he told me I could take it off. And on two graduations, I worked that off.
Sad hour before the kids walked out, we did no things.
Why don't we even ask permission to wear and not wear a mask? I think we're done with this. I mean, Mel's email says it's like, we all know it's rare. Like, we're done. Like, everybody needs to just be like, you're alive? Make me, I'm not putting it on.
Go back in there without it.
Thank you, Linda!
I challenge you to go back in without the mask. Okay, that's the pastor's meeting, you guys, all the way here.
Hold on, after we, after we razz Kim a little bit, two seconds.
Take the mask off, it doesn't even work! Not good at all, are you kidding me? You need to take your power back and do what you were elected to do.
Excuse me, ma'am, can I?
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, there's no rea, reason for even to have a board if she's gonna control everything. I will be working against you in the next election, you can trust me on that.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
All of them, yeah.
I'm Pastor Brian Hoffman, I'm actually from California. I wanted to try to figure out, I spoke at Wayne County Board of Education the other day, and they're fully open, no masks. So I'm just curious, what is the difference between Wayne County, why are you guys not allowing open session?
Okay, she's done.
Okay, that's your choice, that, out of respect, that's your choice. No, no, that's fine. Okay. It just sound like it's mandatory that you guys are required to wear a mask, but I, like I said, it's just... Okay. So what is, so what is the reason why you guys are not allowing open session when the other Board of Education that I just spoke at three days ago, they're having a fully open board? I was actually able to go in and address, um, their Board of Education.
I have one question. As a school teacher, I have one question.
Hold on, hold on, let, let her speak.
Let her speak.
You asked me about me.
Yes, ma'am.
And how I see it.
Okay.
That's how, that's how I really see it, to be on the side of caution, the same way the kids are still wearing the mask in the school, that everything rolling back to me is a process, is a process. Now, I know we're gonna talk about it tonight, you know, it's definitely on the agenda, so I'm looking forward to the best recommendation for everybody to be able to come back with the proper procedures and all that kinda stuff. Cuz we just don't know where COVID is going and where it's not going.
Over, sober, let's open up.
But I, I agree that we should, we should...
Thank you!
So she, so she's, so... So, so here...
She does.
I, 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 I too am an elected official. So, so I understand what it means to have information come in, but at the same time, too, you know, you always make sure you have to do what's in the best interest of the American people. And when you have, and when you have parents, right? When you have parents... And when you have parents, right, when you have parents that are asking for the schools to be opened up, especially being African-American, and you understand how when kids are far away from school, I have children in school too, me and my wife, we grow up like this. So, yeah, so we, we have elementary school kids. And so, we're, it, it feel like having the school closed and not having access to it, especially when you're hearing more information and you send emails and something like that, like this new information is coming out, one, the mask, we have been rendered useless, and we've known that from the beginning. No, no, and, and, and it's this.
That was spouty.
I had somebody tell me that they've been very fortunate with the protocol that flu was not, was not available.
People who got the flu, they said it was COVID.
I don't know.
Wear the mask, just open up.
Well, you have, you have.
Forget the mask.
As a school teacher, can I put one question to you?
We have no, we have no voice. We have no voice. We can send you an email.
And, and emails are more important.
And you may or may not respond to us. There is no virtual back and forth. We can't even go in Zoom meetings and make comments. We can't do that. You all sit in there or wherever you go, and you make the rules, and you draw up things, and you have no input. You're, you're not, I mean, you're not liable to us at all. You just don't even.
Okay, so just, just clarify, Kim Erby, okay.
I understand, I know who you are. I'm Susan Tyser.
Public comment is just that. We get the opportunity to place a public comment. The board does not respond to you when you make your, get your three minutes to speak to us.
But you need to.
My turn? When you send the email to me, I have a reference point to go back to. And, and there have been times I've emailed some, some people back and said, please call me. One person said, oh no, I'd rather talk through email. I said, okay, but I thought you said you didn't have a voice. So Kim Erby picks up her phone, Kim Erby will have a dialogue, Kim Erby would even set up a Zoom to talk to all of you. Okay? I don't have a, what I'm saying, that has been my response. I do email some people back, especially when it's in my district and they let me know. I do email you back, and I often say, can I talk to you? And most people don't reply back to me and say, well, no. Okay, I'm just letting you know.
I have called you.
I'm just letting you know.
I have called you back, and you said, sorry, I've got, I've got another call coming in. I'll call you back.
Hold up, here's a question. If there is a vote tonight, Kim.
And I got your gateway?
Hold up, hold up, hold up. If there's a vote tonight for you all to get your power back, will you vote yes?
I haven't lost any power.
Oh, Kim.
And if you vote yes, you're going to lose more.
She's too scared of the big, big box.
Why do you guys do that?
Then why have you not done it?
Honey, my power does not diminish just because you add some zero.
Well, my power doesn't diminish when you come in, honey.
But this is what we have to be afraid of right here. We have to be afraid of this right here.
The commission.
We have to be afraid of this right here. We have to be afraid of this right here. We are going to be just like Bradford County in Florida and lose children if we do not stop her from this crazy discipline policy and not implementing the security measures they need to be implemented.
She had enough money to remodel the, the boardroom, but she didn't have enough money to put a lock on the damn door at Southern?
Uh, they were locked.
SROs to keep the SROs in school. That's not been signed. This is a problem right here. Well, this is a problem. Safety is a problem. I am a parent of a Southern Guilford High School student. My son was allowed to walk out of the classroom, down the hallway, and get in his car and drive out of the building, or drive out of the parking lot. Thirty-five minutes after someone trespassed onto the school.
Hey, he's sneaking out of here. Yeah.
Walked out of the school building, got in their car, and drove home. No truck was present eight days later. No policy, no law followed. I had a time stamp. My son was not, his teacher had no idea what was going on because the po- the policy was not followed. The school was not locked down. His teacher had no idea what was going on.
Hey, so look, let me, let me, let me. Let me say something because I gotta, I, I do gotta head out of here, get to Goldboro. But I do want to say this. I, I want to say this. One, I want to thank you for stopping. I do. Right, no, I want to, I want to, I want to thank you for stopping because at least, at least you took the time to hear people's voices, you know, and, you know. I drove out here. I don't live out here. But, but I appreciate you for taking your time out. And I only ask you, just remember, and you got elected, because I'm an elected official too, I'm a councilman in my seat, I'm running for Congress. When you got elected to be the voice of the voices, and right now, standing out here locked out their voices, they don't have a voice. And this is exactly the start of the revolution that occurred. No representation in a room that they couldn't get into. And so you're the only voice right now that these parents out here are hoping for. So if you can take their voices and their concern, you know, there's a lot of hurt parents out here, you know, and I'm pretty sure there's a lot much more that they had a chance to come out here, they would be here. And so that's, and that, that's, that's all we're asking is, when you go back in there, remember the, the voices, the faces that are out here and students and so. But I do appreciate, I do appre- I do appreciate you for stopping by and stopping out here on the way because you didn't have to. You could, you could have did like some of your constituents and went in the back way, so.
Now, can I ask you one question before you go in and something to think about when you go? Because I'm a Guilford County student.
Absolutely.
I have students in my classroom, and I fought hard to get students into my classroom. My parents teach me to destroy the school building. That's a discipline. I can bring what I have to work to get kids into my classroom. There were teachers that had to fight for them. Parents shouldn't be coming in. We can allow them to come to our classroom. We gotta wear a mask to go inside, so.
That'd be fabulous. Yeah, let's pray.
So Heavenly Father, I thank you for God this moment. Lord, you said with two or more God that you were there in the midst. Father, I pray God that you'll let your anointing fall upon us right now, Father. I pray God that each and every person that is here, God, walk away with your sister, hope God that you are in control. Lord, even though we are not able to be in the room, Father, we know your spirit can go anywhere. So Father, we pray God that you can go in there and touch the hearts and the minds of each and every educator in that room, Father, every board member in that room, Father. If they come back with the word, Father, to encourage the parents, that we're going to open this back up, Father, and give the parents their voice back. Lord, I thank you for the leaders that are here that have been birthed out of adversity in the midst of this moment. Lord, I pray for Greenthor right now, Father, and each and every city, God, that represents the state of North Carolina, Father. And even to California, Lord, we come up against your spirit of critical race theory, Father, that is trying to indoctrinate our children, Father, that is causing so much division and so much hate, Father. We come against a racial tension, God, that is constantly hitting this country, Father. We come up against it right now, Lord. We just speak you, God, out into the atmosphere, Father, to move mountains, Father, begin to unify this country. God, we are called the United States. So Father, bring us together, Father, in unity. For your word says, how can two walk together unless it breathe? So Father, we pray, God, that we dwell together in unity, Father, that we walk together in unity, Father. I pray, God, for each and every leader here, God, that came and put this on, Father, every parent, God, that represent their household, Father, and those who are not here, those who watched on Facebook, Father, all the other social media outlet, Father, continue to just lift up this group, Father, raise up this remnant for such a time as this. We just magnify your name, Father. We thank you. We give you the praise, the honor, and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Brian.
I know, that's true.
Just follow around. I want to get a picture with people like the new. As soon as I get a picture, and I thought, I'll read that.
Oh, yeah. Did you see that? This is his card.
Going to expire next year when I get elected into office. Your body's not going to be able to use it anymore. Oh, yes.
I love.
Do I get a race card?
Not me. Thank you.
Actually, I used, I actually went somewhere. I went to go, I went to go buy some coffee, and I had to get out of race card. He went to go try to carry it. Play the race card here. I'm like, I'm sorry. Can I get a picture with everybody? Where's that sign? Yes, that's the one I want. Thank you. Can I get a picture with everybody, please? Which, which, which way? This way?
Yeah.
Yep, that might be best.
Erin.
Look, hold on. Got anybody in the picture?
One, two, three, smile. There we go. Awesome. We're good. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You can hold it. Yeah, you can hold it. It's mine. I brought it.
Oh, my God.
I did. All right, gotta stop praying now, Ramer. You better stop praying now, Ramer.
Stand in the middle, stand in the middle. Let's do one more. Let's do one more. What do you do? Here we go. Give me a second. Let me just tune this up. Here we go. Awesome. Okay.
Nice to meet you. Hope your trip is uneventful. I've made that drive long.
I liked it. I liked.
What you do is life-saving.
Like, like I said, we have five children, so we can bring the kids this time. I'm really trying to stay here. That's what I was trying to do.
Okay, so we want to say thank you to Pastor Brian, and it's beautiful. And while I've got everybody's attention, I just want to explain, we're doing this today to give every parent, every immigrant, every taxpayer, citizen a voice. So if you have something you want to say, now is your chance.
This is a big disappointment.
Unfortunately, Danielle Campbell, I can have everybody's attention here. This is very important.
Really upsetting. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just, I mean, you all are welcome to that, but as a teacher, I'm going to keep teaching.
That's great.
We didn't tell you to not teach. When did we say don't teach?
Danielle Campbell's daughter was the one who, hey, turn around and say hello to beautiful Miss Anita Sharp. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so back to where we were here. Danielle Campbell's daughter was the child that was brutally attacked at Southern Guilford High School. She was not able to come today because she's had to take so much time off of work to take care of her family. So she sent me some words, and I'm going to try to read them here and not get upset, which all of you know I have a very difficult time doing that, so. Let's see. These are her words. "I want this to be known. The superintendent said, had the students mentioned the alteration, altercation that happened the day before, this could have all been addressed. Thousands of children commit suicide every day. It's because of being bullied, and they feel they can't come out and say anything about what is happening to them. We, as parents, see our children as happy and full of life. My daughter has finally told me these girls have bullied her since middle school. I never knew. We don't always know what our kids are going through, so for her to believe a child that is being bullied and finally took a stand against her bullies would speak out thinking they would hurt her even worse makes no sense. She never thought this would happen, but I thank God it wasn't worse. This woman that is supposed to lead our kids is making them feel like they don't matter. She has no soul. To think this way, this was my daughter's fault, and in a way, she is blaming my daughter because she didn't want to speak up while in fear. I am not going to let it sleep. And best believe, they woke a sleeping giant. My kids are my life. I lost one to gun violence. And I'll be damned if I lose another to someone else's hands. Let them know this is from my heart." That is from Danielle Campbell. So we are working at Take Back to find her an attorney, and Mr. Zimmerman, nowhere he's at, right here. He has graciously reached out to some different groups, and we are in the process of getting in contact with them because we are not going to let her be silenced. We will not let this die. It's not going to happen. There is a reason why this video took off, and I strongly believe that God took it and he made people see it that needed to see it because it was time, like Pastor Brian said. It is time. I can't carry this on my shoulders anymore. Y'all have got to start stepping up and helping. It's been a long four years, and if we're going to get anything done, you have all got to help me, and that means more than just sitting behind a keyboard. All of you showing up today is huge. You answered my prayers. You really, really answered my prayers. So if you aren't familiar with Take Back Our Schools, you need to, you need to go to our website and download it onto your phone. And every time you run into anyone that is trying to do what's right for our school system, you need to have them download it, and they need to read it. What is on this page is four years of data, FOIA requests, material that many of us have found and learned. The idea of the website is to make us all on the same page so we can fight together. With that said, I know that Misty, you want to talk now? Misty's son also attends this school, and she has been fighting so hard. I want you guys to understand, she called every newspaper relentlessly. She called the reporters. Thank, thank you, Pastor Brian.
Yes, we love you. Big travel.
When reporters got it wrong, with what I will say is almost every one of them got it wrong.
Because they were told wrong. They were lied to.
She corrected them on her own without even having to be told. This woman is a force to be reckoned with, and I am so thankful that God brought her into my life.
I don't even know what I'm talking. I'm loud, as you can't tell. Yes, my son was in the building that day, his first day back on campus, because he had been at home, going to an exam, and had no idea of anything that was going on. He got up out of his classroom at, uh, I think it was 10:22 a.m., 35 minutes after the incident, as it's being downplayed, whatever, um, they keep trying to say happened, uh, and walked out the classroom, down the hallway, and got in his car and drove home from the school. The same day, 35 minutes after the incident occurred. Okay, well, I was none the wiser because the parents had not been notified that an incident had occurred either. So 2:30 on Wednesday afternoon, 30 some hours after that altercation, um, I got a phone call from the school saying that the incident had occurred and was letting us know about it. So of course sirens went off in my head like, oh my gosh, what in the world? And the questions came because we're obviously being lied to. We're being told that, um, all policies and procedures were followed. Well, how were the policies and procedures followed? If not a single person, the school was not locked down. There was no. If not a single person, the school was not locked down, there was no, can you not hear me? Here, hold my phone here. No policies and procedures were followed because the school was never locked down. My son again was allowed to walk out of his classroom, down a hallway, unsecured because the teacher, his teacher had no idea what had happened. There was no alert, there was no emergency, any protocol, nothing. I mean, just absolutely my boy. And so we've been told, the media's been told that all policies and, I think she said it again yesterday on Fox 8, that all policies and procedures were followed. It's just mind blowing and when you ask about safety and increasing safety, it's basically just kind of downplayed. Like, we're doing everything, the board hasn't, the commissioners haven't given us the money. It's all lies, all lies. Why is there a problem? Why is there a problem with having safer schools? Why? Why is that a problem? Does anybody understand that at all? Like, does it seem like a problem to have?
No.
Want your school to be safe, your child to be safe?
No.
Well, she got a new boardroom!
She got a room!
But she can't make sure that this crisis go that she purchased, why isn't it being, why aren't the schools using it? You know, what happened to the one card? Right? I have posted all kinds of information. That started in 2018. They put out a YouTube video that all of our kids are supposed to be wearing these one cards. Now I tell you what, don't tell me, a parent, that a one card would not have helped this situation or stopped it because any adult teacher walking through would have noticed those people did not have their one cards on. That would have been the first explanation to a child to say, who is this person? Why are they in my school? They didn't follow policy. Had there been an SRO or an adult at the school, policy for Guilford County Schools is all visiting adults and children have to check in at the front office.
Yes.
Nobody was there. Why don't we have the alert system set up on the front doors that we're supposed to have? Why don't we have the 911 systems, the buttons? The crisis go, we need help. This was not the teacher's fault. Let's get that clear right now. SRO didn't stop this, principal didn't stop this.
Sheriff's Department didn't stop it.
Two teachers who are told, don't put yourself in harm's way, they stopped it. Our teachers will fight for our kids if we fight for them. So we need to stand together and back them. I'm not putting all this blame on the principal. It starts at the top. She wants to be president and CEO, damn straight. She's president and CEO and it's time to be fired.
Yes!
She's got to go!
Yes, we have five seats open. Five seats open in 2022. Two, four, six, eight and at large. We have a meeting coming up on the 15th. Next Tuesday, 6 o'clock. We will be at the GOP headquarters. Anybody that's interested in running, anybody that has any questions, anyone that just wants to help. We're not going to run this as a primary type of thing. Sorry, we're running it as a team. We are going to figure out who the best candidate is and we're going to all stand behind those five candidates and they're running on one card. Okay, in order to do this, I don't care if you're Republican, I'm sorry, I don't care if you're Democrat, I don't care what you claim to be. I just want somebody that is going to stand up and take back our schools.
Yes.
15th, it's on our website as well. So if you don't follow Take Back Our Schools, we are on Facebook, we are on Telegram, we are on Twitter and we have our, we have our own website that you can get on. We have newsletters. I'm doing everything and anything I can to get this information out to you. Anybody else would like to speak, Ms. Erin?
There's one over there.
Oh, come on, I just.
I just, uh, I just wanted everybody to be aware, I don't know if you know, but there's, like she was talking, Kim was talking about, there's a comment window going on right now for how a lot of money is being spent through the state NCDBI on policy of how they're going to train teachers. And it's a huge amount of money and they need comments now from everybody, 10K or more, to go against CRT and SEL. If you're not sure where to go, if anybody's on Facebook, you can go No Left Turn Education, join that group and the link is on there and it'll take you right to the page. You're putting your information and putting your comments. It's very important to get these comments out because this is what's going to dictate how this money is spent.
When's the deadline?
The 18th, coming up real soon. So they're going to be looking for us. Yeah, I can do it right now. See anybody else? No Left Turn Education is on Facebook.
Do you want to talk about Mark Fatsch? Maybe just kind of Mark Robinson, Lee Fatsch, Walter.
How are you going to vote on this college that's going to be, if Sharon's also a power for this money she can spend there?
Vote, no!
How are you going to vote, with your sister or for us, your constituents? So if you go to takebackourschools.com, we have a link on there that is for Mark Robinson's facts, F-A-C-T-S. It's all the way at the very bottom. We asked as a community for a way to voice our concerns and a voice for our teachers and for our students that are being taught CRT, that are being taught to hate America, that are being taught that if you're black, you're this, if you're white, you're this. Right? All of us, I think at some point of the adults, of the parents that are here right now that have kids currently in Guilford County Schools can tell you that our children are being indoctrinated. They are being taught CRT and to hate each other.
I'm already a kid!
So Mark has come up with the facts, F-A-C-T-S, and you can go on there. He has promised to keep our information confidential, but he is gathering material to prove exactly what's been going on in our schools, that our children are being taught to hate each other. If they're white, they're being told they're at fault. If they're black, they're being told they are owed. It has to stop. It has to stop. Because of Mark Robinson, he is listening to us and we need to support him. We need to show him all the support because he is the only one that stepped up and was loud. He did what he promised. Anybody else have anything they would like to say? Thank you, Michael.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Alan Branson, former Guilford County Commissioner, Chairman, Vice Chairman for eight years, lost last round. Eastern Guilford County is going to be holding a meeting on Tuesday night also for Republicans to come out. Senator Amy Gailey, Representative Majority Whip John Hargister will be there. This is a group of individuals forming on the southeast and eastern part, southeastern part of Guilford County, it's open to all. It's going to be at McLean's Wildlife Club. It starts at 6 o'clock. Not holding it to my mouth close enough. But anyway, we're having a meeting for Republicans to form in eastern and southeastern Guilford County Tuesday night. And we're going to go back after some of these seats that we lost. I lost by 18 votes. Thankful to the NCAE and the GCAE along with our illustrious Superintendent, Dr. Contreras. She worked her ass off against me, pardon my language. But she sent emails out making the principals go out to the polls and work. Dr. Nora Carr worked my largest precinct against me. Folks, I'm not done yet. My kids have graduated. My daughter is a first-year EC teacher in Poseidon County. And my son graduated Tuesday night, so. But I'm going to be around, I'm going to run for something, just not exactly certain. It's not going to be the school board, I can promise you that. I'm waiting on some of the things to come out of Raleigh and the redistricting and the census. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about anything that's going on right now?
Do people know about this?
So Carolina Teachers Alliance, this is the exact opposite of GCA or NCAE. This is also on our website that you can click it and it takes you straight to the website and you can join. You don't have to be a teacher. You can be employed by GCS or you don't have to. The point is, is these people have decided to stand up for the American way. That's the best way that I can put it. They are willing to fight for us, they're willing to give those teachers a voice that currently do not have a voice. Those teachers that are afraid to stand up and say, no, we shouldn't be teaching this because they don't want to lose their job.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
It's not expensive, it's actually half the cost if you are a teacher to join and they have wonderful benefits. So if you know of teachers that are looking for representation and don't feel like GCAE or NCAE, represent them, this is their alternative for the state of North Carolina.
And it's only like, it's either 25 or $30 for any one of you to join, that's all.
Yep, 25, $30 to join, that's it.
It gives an affirmation that they're, that what they're doing is good. And we all, I encourage every one of you to join, whether you're a teacher or not, if you've ever been one or any of you. But the NCAE costs $600. They represent only half of our teachers in North Carolina. But they will give up the, this will give up to a million dollars worth of insurance. I mean, that's the only reason, that's one of the reasons you need to be a member of it anyway.
So there's another group I found on Steve Bannon's War Room, which everybody should be listening to because it's awesome. It's Moms for Liberty. And we're going to have a, we're going to have a chapter, you already part of a chapter?
They're already in the Take Back.
Okay, well then, this is old news.
It's not old news.
Do they have legal counsel?
Um, yes and no. So they just started a chapter in Union County. They have been, they are in our Facebook group. So Moms for Liberty, they want, they wanted Take Back to change our name to Moms for Liberty. I have fought too hard and I'm not willing to do it. So I invited them in, they invited me in and we are working together. They have learned a lot because they have just started, so because of our timeline, they now know where to go and look and how to figure out what's going on with their schools, okay? The only difference with them is they're growing by leaps and bounds. They had hundreds of people that came out to their school board protest and they were able to get inside.
And where are they?
Union County.
Oh my gosh, Union County.
Yeah.
How will that people come?
I'm telling you.
They know it, they get it, they get the information from all of us.
So, so we are, we have many other groups that are a part of Take Back Our Schools, we're there, like CTA. We have got a ton of them that are in with our Take Back Our School, that's how we found out about it. We are working together with other people. The problem that is unique to Greensboro is people are afraid of being called a racist. The problem in Greensboro is people don't feel that it's worth even speaking out because the media will not report on us. How many times have you seen Take Back Our Schools in anything mentioned?
None.
Zero. Why? That's because the first strings inside that building won't allow it.
That's right.
She puts on the board who she wants.
That's right.
She has the votes to do whatever she wants. Until a child dies, nobody is going to stand up and fight her. And I've been saying that for 2019, when they passed this stupid horrendous discipline policy. We told you guys then what was coming. Andrew Pollak spoke for us. Mark Robinson delivered our signatures. They still voted against the constituents, why? Because I'm, I'm the wrong color? I don't know! It's money. They say they need more money, constantly more money. What about the kids? What about teaching curriculum? They don't need to be getting in our business. We don't need SEL. We don't need to be having these teacher trainings with these racist trainers coming in and hiding our teachers. We need to be taught curriculum. These kids need to be taught curriculum. It's our jobs at home to make sure that they turn out to be good, responsible citizens, not the schools. My kid doesn't need to be fed by this school. Yes, there are some that do and I'd love that we have that opportunity. But we're taking advantage of the system and it needs to stop. Money means more than these kids. And that has got to change. And until we start standing up and calling it out, it's not going to happen. Now, one more thing and I'm going to get off, and I'll get off my, I'll get off my soapbox.
Stand there.
I am the child of an SRO dad. I come from a police family. I do as I'm told because I'm more afraid to go home than if the officer's standing in front of me. But our SROs right now are working without a contract. The sheriff's department, the police department have it ready to go. She has not signed it. Why?
To get rid of them.
I have been told we have six currently, six openings for SROs within GPD. Why? I don't know how many we have in the sheriff, but I'm going to tell you this. This is what I was told by my dad, and no, he's not from here, but I believe he was, he hit the nail on the head. When that incident happened at Southern Guilford, your SROs do not have a contract. So they're like, do I do what I was supposed to do or am I supposed to do the new thing? Your sheriff's department is complicit with her. So nobody did anything. Every single person that broke through that building should have left in handcuffs. Should have left in the back of a cruiser. They were not searched. They don't know if they had a weapon. She's saying everything looks so good on the, on video. Show us the video. We still haven't seen this video. Because most of our video systems are not working. Our SROs leave and I will tell you, we're spending the last two years in a school, Monday through Friday, right alongside my SRO. Your kids are not safe. I saw more weapons and drugs come out of my child's school than I ever care to see again. So if you think the problem is just on the streets down here, we're creating it in these schools by not having consequences. Our government is failing us because they're not holding these kids accountable and we're failing these kids because they turn 18 and they get out on the streets and they can get in trouble and nothing, you know, up until 18, it's, oh, it's okay, you get to go plead out. I'll see you when you're 18. They break the law, they're 18 and they're gone. How is that benefiting and teaching these kids a lesson? It's not. We're teaching them to fail. So I would like this gentleman to introduce himself and what he is running for and I want you to hear from him what's going on.
So my name is William White, I'm running for Guilford County Sheriff, that's not,
Oh, yes!
I'm a, I have three school-aged children, okay? I also went to Southern Guilford, Southern Guilford's changed a lot. That wasn't the Southern Guilford that I went to. The problem with, as you're saying, CRT, there's other things that go along with it. Law enforcement is being what's called framed for the young people to think a certain way. So when your children hear the term law enforcement, police, sheriff, they automatically think a couple things. They think they're racist, they think they're heavy-handed and they think they're no good. So the SRO is effectively taken out of the school.
So the SRO is effectively taken out of the school, for lack of a better term. SROs are scared. Scared to lose their job.
Can you use the microphone? Okay, thanks.
SROs are scared. They're scared to do their job. They're scared to lose the money that they feed their children with. So we have to get back to stand behind them. We have to stop teaching our children that they should be scared of law enforcement. And we also have to have common sense policies, like not let eight people storm a school who are from what we can tell unarmed, but what happens when they are armed? What happens when somebody with a radical agenda goes in that school? That school would be completely decimated. Those eight people that stormed that school and then walked out and got something to eat and just left. So we're gonna take back our schools. You have four really good candidates running, I'm one of them, but let me tell you, you have, I'm sorry, you have three other candidates right now running that are really good and that they stand for the same thing. So thanks for letting me be out here, I appreciate it.
Anybody else care to come up and talk or have anything to say? Okay, so what we have been told by John Kardister, we've also started a construction with the governor, we have multiple people. Her question is, is there any legal recourse for what Dr. Contreras is doing and that's done and how she has complete control over the board? The court answer is no. There's nobody that sits above the superintendent or the school board. So what we have done is we have talked, Erin has talked, I have talked, many of us have been talking, trying to get some form. Cindy has sent many letters requiring to get a legislation passed that puts a body over top of all North Carolina superintendents and school boards. And when they run into situations like we have, where our board has literally essentially, for the most part, been fought and paid for and are complicit to what the superintendent wants, we can complain to them. Because right now, our county commissioners can't do anything. How did they get rid of her in Syracuse? Well, in Syracuse, they are a unionized state. So they took a vote of all the teachers and the teachers voted to have her removed. She wasn't removed right then, they had an election going on and they wanted, the current school board wanted to wait till the new election, the new board members were on, and then they took a vote. In between that time, what ended up happening is Rhode swept in and found her another job and she left. And we got her. Like I said, if you go to our website, it is all on there. Everything is on there.
I promise I won't talk too long. Guilford County Board of Commissioners was taken over by the majority of Democrats and it doesn't matter to me whether you're Republican, a Democrat, or an independent. What you gotta have nowadays is a little bit of common sense. I'm a small business owner and third generation. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got to watch the budget. Over half the budget, the taxpayers in Guilford County goes to this joint right behind me. They're always hollering, they can't get enough money. Well, this particular year, we have a new manager. Former budget director in several years that I served on the board. What they have done in this budget, you're not gonna see it in the paper and you're not gonna see it in the press, on the media, they've depleted our savings that we had for hard times. It's called a fun balance. You know, they're toting, Skip Austin, the chairman, is promoting, we're not gonna have a tax increase. Well, I'm the smart enough guy to know, the ones of us who were beat, the ones of us who decided not to run and lost the majority, we had a pretty good nest egg for Guilford County. So if we see a situation with inflation, I can promise you, we're gonna be in trouble. We're gonna have a tax reevaluation coming up next year. So those of you who are property owners, look for a 12 to 14% increase in your tax bill. That's gonna be another situation where they potentially may not have another tax increase. But while we were serving, we give it back to the people. We give you a decrease, we held the line for the eight years that I served. So you've got to be extremely careful in watching the numbers and what this crowd in here is telling people in the community, they're not getting enough money. There is gonna be a bond on the ballot that Skip's gonna put on there, the chairman, Mr. Chairman Skip Austin. He's looking for $1.6 billion to be on the ballot in 2022. So be careful, watch what you're doing, and watch these clowns and vote them out.
Well, and that's why I said, that's why we are, we are pulling anybody and everybody together who wants to run, anybody that is for the betterment of our schools and for our kids. And we are gonna figure out who's running and we're gonna run as a team. We're not primaring, we're running as a team. So, so I'm being told we need to make some noise. Anybody wanna make any noise?
Well, you can make noise over there. Oh yeah, but we all shout the same thing together.
So the ladies have our chance.